Welcome, and it is 9:00 AM. We are going to start this first board meeting of the new academic calendar. Thank you for all being here. If you could please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Gracious Father in heaven, we pause to take a moment to say thank you. We recognize your awesomeness, your splendor. We thank you for the blessings of St. Petersburg College. We are excited today about this agenda. We've got some new hires, new deans, new provosts. We celebrate the careers of those retiring, those public servants of education. We thank you for them and their service to this college. We thank you for this administration, these professors, the staff. We thank you for their dedication to the students of St. Petersburg College. We pray your blessings upon them as we embark on another semester, another school year. We pray for wisdom as boards of trustee that we can pour over this material and make decisions which are best for the college and which honor you. We pray for the men and women of the armed forces, wherever they are. Guide, protect, and keep them. Help us to have a great day. We love you, we praise you. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We're going to start today with some retirement resolutions. And if I could, I'd love to invite up Mr. Eric Folsom first.
Whereas Eric Folsom began his career as a shipping and receiving assistant on the Allstate campus of St. Petersburg College in 2007. And whereas Mr. Folsom is known for delivering outstanding customer service and as a result has through the years assumed additional duties and job titles. And whereas Mr. Folsom is retiring as a materials management assistant charged with supporting multiple departments by delivering mail and packages as well as processing and receiving reports in a timely manner. And whereas Mr. Folsom is a talented artist who has decorated the halls of the Allstate Center with his paintings and other artwork which have been enjoyed by all. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by Eric Folsom and extend to him our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, on this 21st day of August 2018. Congratulations, Eric.
I'd just like to thank the college family for all these years. I started off as a student at St. Petersburg College. And my piano teachers, when I was losing a job, my piano teacher suggested I come to the college. And I'm always an advocate for the college. I'll always market it and tell people what a great asset it is to our community, how much we need the college, and what a wonderful place St. Petersburg College is for our entire community.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you for the kind words, Mr. Folsom, and for your service. Next, I'd like to invite up Mr. Jack Gartner.
Good morning. Whereas Dr. Jack Gart-- is it Gartner?
Yes.
Gartner began his career at St. Petersburg College as a faculty member on August 19, 1993. Whereas Dr. Gartner has supported the Natural Science Department on the St. Petersburg Gibbs Campus and the Baccalaureate Biology Program college-wide by actively serving on committees, mentoring faculty, and sharing his knowledge and wisdom with fellow faculty, program directors, academic chairs, deans, and college presidents. And whereas Dr. Gartner dedicated his professional career to promoting student success by providing academically rigorous instruction that empowered his students to succeed in their studies at St. Petersburg College as well as when they transferred to the university programs. And whereas Dr. Gartner throughout his career has studied and participated in biological research and produced quality instructional materials for students. He is unmatched in his professionalism, enthusiasm for teaching, and knowledge of his subject matter. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by Dr. Jack Gartner to extend him our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, this 21st day of August 2018. Congratulations.
I appreciate it. I've always said that if this had been in the mountains of Pennsylvania, I would have had the perfect career. But I thank you all. It's come way too fast, and I will miss all of it.
We'll miss you.
Next, I'd love to invite up Ms. Wanda McCawthon.
Here comes the troop. I better start reading while her tribe is coming. Whereas Wanda McCawthon began her journey with St. Petersburg College as a student on the Clearwater Campus graduating with her associate's degree in 1973. And whereas Ms. McCawthon worked as a student assistant in the library while enrolled and became a full-time employee upon her graduation. Over the years, she held many library positions including audiovisual receptionist, library circulation clerk, library assistant, and finally, library services paraprofessional. She continued her education in library information science at USF and helped establish the Tarpon Springs Campus Library in 1975. Over the years, she also worked at times at the Health Education Center. Most recently, she provided guidance in the establishment of the new Clearwater East Community Library at SPC. And whereas Ms. McCawthon participated in many of the great evolutions in higher education, library services, and technology over the course of 45 years. She adapted to the migration of library services from print to digital and mastered technological advances to better serve students and the college. And whereas Ms. McCawthon is an advocate for all students and is dedicated to student service. She is an original member of the Dr. John and Ruth Clark Scholarship Committee at SPC and served on the Black History Month Committee each year. In addition, she continues to serve her community as a volunteer for Habitat for Humanity and an active member of her church, Friends of Rich Cress and the Greater Rich Cress YMCA. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college and the community by Wanda McCawthon and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, this 21st day of August 2018.
And to all of my St. Petersburg College family, and my friends, and my relationships, to all of these folks, and many, many more, I truly thank my God for allowing me to become a student at St. Petersburg College. Being mentored by Dr. Teresa Goss, who's gone on home, she just showed me the way she mentored me as being the woman I am today in education and serving students and serving people. Not only her, but my parents, my parents as growing up. But I truly thank God for the years I've been here to serve the students as a servant, and that's what I am, a servant. And let them know that their achievement here at St. Petersburg College has been a great achievement for them, graduating those that's gone on and came back and told me, Ms. Wanda, you just helped us so much. St. Petersburg College is an institution of education for our students to come. And I am an advocate of St. Petersburg College ethic in my community. I will be sending more students here to start there here at St. Petersburg. I'm bringing them by hand. I'm bringing them myself. So thank you so much for letting me be a servant here, and I've continued to do my servant to my best to speak about St. Petersburg College. Thank you, and God bless each and every one of you.
Thank you so much, Ms. McCawthon. And finally, I'd like to invite up Ms. Peggy Zuro.
Peggy and I grew up together here at St. Petersburg College. She started a year before me when I was a financial aid accounting clerk, so we have a lot of secrets. Whereas Peggy Zuro began her career as the collections officer at the district office of St. Petersburg College in 1986 and served in that capacity for 32 years until her retirement in June. Whereas Ms. Zuro was a dedicated meticulous employee who was always willing to give her best to students and the college. And whereas Ms. Zuro's job was often difficult because throughout her career she was the only college employee assigned to resolve students' debt issues. In these sometimes trying times, she was always kind, courteous, and a true professional. And whereas Ms. Zuro always kept the students' need in mind and educational objectives and often went extraordinary measures to assist in resolving their accounts. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by Peggy Zuro and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, this 21st day of August 2018. Congratulations.
Thank you all so very much for coming. I said before, when I started here, I wasn't looking for a family, I was looking for a job. I found a family. St. Petersburg College is a family. We need to remind ourselves that we are a family, and our students do come first, even when they make excuses for not paying their bills. But thank you all. It's been a pleasure to work here for 32 years.
Thank you to everyone who was here and to those who could not attend today either for your years of dedication to this institution and for continuing to be advocates of our college and the community. We appreciate that. We'll move now to announcements and introductions, and we'll start with the new dean of the College of Computer and Information Technology.
Good morning, Chair Stone Cypher.
Good morning.
Members of the board and Dr. Williams. It's my pleasure to introduce the new dean of our Computer and Information Technology Program, Dr. James Stewart. He holds a doctorate degree in computer science from Colorado Technical University, a master's in management from Antioch University, and a bachelor's degree in finance from Xavier University. He has been a subject matter expert in information technology and management solutions. He's served in senior managerial positions for large organizations. He's also been an associate computer science professor as well as a professor of computer science at both Colorado Technical University and Florida Southwestern State College. Please welcome Dr. James Stewart.
I want to say I appreciate all the support that I've gotten since I've been here for Week Five. And also, I want to appreciate my team, my faculty and my chairs who've been supportive. But most importantly, it is an honor for me to be your dean for CCIT. And I hope to deliver my experiences to help meet the organization's key objectives and strategic plans. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have the new dean of Allied Health Sciences.
It's my pleasure to introduce Dean Deanna Stenford, who holds an education specialist degree from the University of Florida in higher education administration. Following her bachelor's degree in dental hygiene from West Liberty University, she continued her education at the University of Central Florida and attained a master's degree in educational leadership. She is currently completing the dissertation phase of her PhD from the University of Florida. She also holds a position as a commissioner for American Dental Association Commission on Dental Accreditation. She has been the associate dean of health sciences at the College of Central Florida for the past 25 years, and she has now become the dean of Allied Health Sciences within our College of Health Science. Please welcome Deanna Stenford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and the Board of Trustees. I just want to say I am honored and truly blessed to have the opportunity to work in an institution and be adopted at such a fine level. In the past, as Dr. Stewart said, the first five or six weeks, the support that we've been given from the administration, from the fellow faculty, the fellow administrators, I mean, it's been amazing. And what, even being in the community college system for 25 years, what I've witnessed here in these few five, six weeks is the amount of support that you give to your students. And truly, you do speak the words, but you walk the walk that students come first, and your institution is just such a great replication of that. So I just want to say thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to many years of future growth and development in the area. So thank you.
Thank you. And next, we'll introduce the new associate provost at Tarpon Springs Campus.
Good morning, Chair Stone Cypher, trustees, and Madam President. My name is Rod Davis, provost of Tarpon Springs, and I'm here to introduce Dr. Jennifer Dale as our newest associate provost. Dr. Dale comes to us from Hillsborough Community College where she held the position of director of academic advising, disability resources, threat assessment. She holds a doctorate, organizational leadership, and conflict resolution, and we have been very, very pleased to have her. Please welcome Dr. Jennifer Dale.
I have to tell you, it is truly a pleasure to be here and to be working at SPC. The onboarding process was just fantastic. I hadn't experienced anything like that at other institutions. And I have a wonderful provost and team that I'm working with, and all the support that I've gotten from other provosts and APs and staff, it has just been just a wonderful experience, and I am just looking forward to the longevity here at SPC.
Thank you. And next, we have the new associate provost at the Downtown and Midtown Campus.
Good morning, Chair Stone Cypher.
Good morning.
Board trustee members, Madam President. I am Tashika Griffith. I do serve as the provost for the Downtown and Midtown and Palladium. I would like to introduce you to Mr. Patrick Booth, although I feel as if Patrick needs no introduction. He has worked at the college for many years and made phenomenal contributions to each department. We are very excited to onboard Mr. Booth to the Downtown and Midtown Centers, and we're so, so fortunate to have him to now be a member of our team. Please join me in welcoming Patrick.
Good morning, Chair Stone Cypher, members of the board, and Madam President. It is an absolute honor and privilege to be here today. Over the last few weeks, it's been a wonderful opportunity to get a chance to kind of meet Dr. Griffith's team, and they've been so welcoming. And I look forward to continuing my role here at the college in helping to improve services and meet the needs of our students. So thank you.
And finally, a new associate vice president and human resources.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Williams. My name is Brian Miles, and this morning I have the great pleasure of introducing our next associate vice president of human resources, Ms. Carol Sumter. Carol is a graduate of the U.S. Military Academy. She holds a JD and an MBA from Emory University in Atlanta. She has served as an active-duty army officer and also brings 20 years of management experience specializing in organizational leadership, change management, and process improvement, three things that we needed desperately in the human resources department two years ago when we started our rebuild. Carol has been with us since that time. She started as a consultant and then served as acting director, and now she will hold the permanent position of associate vice president. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Carol Sumter.
Good morning, everyone. It's a pleasure to be a part of the SPC family. One of the reasons I was happy to take this job is I ask a lot of people during this time of change, why do you stay here? And everyone said the same thing, I love it here. And that's something that you don't normally get to hear when you're working in an organization that's going through so much change as we are here. One thing I will say, I have not had a boring day. One of the things that we are really focused on is making sure that our human resources department is not a standalone department, but that we are completely integrated into all areas of the college and truly perform our duties as a true partner, helping our customers achieve the goals that they have within, of course, the boundaries of the laws and the policies and procedures of the college. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here today, and we look forward to many great years of service and of working together. Thank you so much. We're going to move now to the annual organizational meeting, and I would like to have Ms. Cole here. I believe she had to pop out for a phone call very quickly. Rebecca, is there any way you could grab her so we can keep this train moving down the tracks?
Well, you know, Mr. Chair, we could do our board member comments right now if you want to. Give her a few minutes.
We'll give her 60 seconds, and if she's not here, we'll move on.
Perfect.
Thank you all for your patience. I'm gonna wait just a minute. Okay.
Let me answer the question.
With that, we will start our annual organizational meeting, and I will be reading from a script here to keep it official and on track. Section 1001 dot 61 of the Florida statutes requires that each year at its first regular meeting after July 1st, the College Board of Trustees shall organize by electing a chair whose duty it shall be to preside at all meetings, to call special meetings of the board, and to attest to actions of the board. And the board shall also elect a vice chair to act as chair during the absence or disability of the chair. Pursuant to this requirement, I now open the floor for nominations for the chair of the Board of Trustees for the 2018-2019 fiscal year.
I nominate you.
We have a first and a second for Nathan Stone Cypher. If there are no further nominations, I declare the nomination closed. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you all. As a result of the vote, Nathan Stone Cypher, which is me, myself, and I, is declared the board chair for the 2018-2019 fiscal year. I now open the floor for nominations for the vice chair of the Board of Trustees for the 2018-2019 fiscal year.
I nominate Katie Cole.
Second.
There's a first and a second for Katie Cole on the floor. Any other nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. As a result of the vote, Ms. Katie Cole is declared the new vice chair for the 2018-2019 fiscal year. Rule 6H-X23-1-spot-04 of the Board of Trustees Rules and Procedures requires the Board of Trustees to establish a schedule at its annual organizational meeting for its regular meetings for the college's fiscal year, including day, time, and location. We have an attachment to our agenda here showing proposed meeting dates, times, and locations. If everyone has had time to review those, I would ask for a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Each year, the board chairman appoints representative board members to serve on the board of directors of each of the direct support organizations. In our case, that is the Foundation and the LIPA Ratner Museum of Art.
Strategic Institute.
Don't put me.
First, I would like to ask Ms. Katie Cole to stay on as our representative to the Foundation.
That's fine.
For the 2018-2019 fiscal year. Thank you, Katie. In addition, I would like to ask Mr. Foster if he would be our representative on the LIPA Ratner Museum of Art for the 2018-2019 fiscal year. Would you be willing to serve, sir? Thank you. We appreciate it. Okay.
Institute for Strategic Policy Solutions.
Which one is that?
I think you got alumni.
Oh, we have one more. Also be appointing a representative for the Institute of Strategic Policy Solutions, and Ms. Bridget Bello. Would you be willing to do that for your chair and for the Board of Trustees?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. That concludes our organizational meeting for the 2018-2019 fiscal year, unless I am forgetting anything, which I do not believe I am. So we will move on. Thank you all very much.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
No, that's okay. I see it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. With that, we will move to our comments, starting with myself. At this time, would just like to say that I'm humbled to be serving again as the chair of this board. I look forward to what this next year has to offer. It feels like last year was a year of transition and planning, and this year has very quickly become a year of action, and I plan for it to continue that way. There are exciting things on the horizon. There are a lot of challenges on the horizon. I am happy to be here to serve, and it's with great pleasure that I do so. So thank you for having me, and I look forward to what we have upcoming. With that being said, I did attend the Welcome Titans this year. What a great event. This was two weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago. I can't keep track of time anymore. It was fantastic to see so many representatives from our faculty there in one place at Indian Rocks Baptist. Rocks Baptist for a morning of what I thought was good conversation, a great vision of the future and of some of the challenges that we have, challenges we have ahead, and I really enjoyed hearing from the students who were onstage for almost an hour, giving us some honest feedback and a great panel of, in their opinion, what works and what doesn't, and how we can all become better together. So, thank you all for being there. I enjoyed being there. With that, I will pass it on to any board members who have comments today.
Mr. Chair, I do, I have a question. I actually want to ask that we move, I was looking at our list, and I would ask that if, if the board didn't mind, we move our January 15th meeting to Tarpon, simply because that's right before the legislative session starts, and as you well know, Chris Browse, Representative Browse, is in leadership, and I would ask that we have that meeting there so that we can maybe invite him to come to the meeting to discuss our agenda for what we need from the legislative session.
This is the January 15th meeting, which is at the epicenter currently?
Yes, sir. I would ask that if we could vote to move that there.
I don't have an issue moving it from the epicenter.
I just think that would be smart with the legislature, starting in March. January would be a good time at the beginning of the year to give him what we are looking for with the legislature, since he is in leadership and that, in fact, a future Speaker of the House, so.
I agree. Any other questions or comments regarding Mr. Givens' proposal? Ms. Gardner, do we need to vote on that to make it official, or can we take the Tarpon Springs changes?
I think we need to vote because we voted on the.
Okay. Do I have a motion on the floor to officially move the January 15th meeting from the epicenter to Tarpon Springs campus?
Mr. Chair, I move that we move our January 15 meeting, 2019, to the Tarpon Springs campus.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you, Mr. Givens.
And two, two other things is I went to the Welcome, I was a little late to the Welcome Titans event. It was a phenomenal event. I got a little moved. I thought I was in a locker room since Dr. Williams put up a football speech on the screen, and I was thinking back, I was almost ready to go out on the field, Bill, like I was at University of Florida, but I figured my knees or nor my back could handle that, so. But it was a great event. I think it was very inspirational. I think it was a good start for a good year. And the other thing is, Dr. Williams, you and your staff should be committed. I've looked at the resumes of the folks that you guys have hired. We're gonna get ourselves in trouble with USF because we're gonna be University of St. Petersburg with all these resumes. Everybody's a doctorate, but I think it speaks to us raising the standard and making sure that we have the most qualified and best people, no matter where they come from. We have the best people for our students so that we can give the best quality education. So, welcome to all of you. See, the dean came up and he said CCIT, he's already given acronyms, you know, he's gonna fit right in, I'll be lost. And, and then you, and Ms. Stentifer, yes, good gator, so, Bill, she, we're classing the place up, Mr. Foster, so.
Hey, you always say, "Bill, I was a gator too," you know?
I know, but Bill's, we're old, you're a young gator.
You got some bull signs going up.
Oh, some bull, oh, yeah, I'm a bull gator too, so it doesn't matter. But, but thank you. I, I just want to say, you and your staff should be committed on the quality of individuals that are being brought in. We look at these, and I'm, I'm not trying to speak for the rest of the board, but when I look at these resumes and I look at these backgrounds, I mean, if they live up to what is in their resumes, we are definitely adding quality to our, in depth to our organization. So, thank you. That's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Givens. Any other comments from the board? Okay. We will move to our President.
Good morning, everyone. I want to thank the board for being at graduation. That was very important to us, and the ceremony was very good, and I thought that we did a great job, and we had a large number of individuals attend and participate. And for our administrators and our faculty who joined us, thank you for being there on behalf of the students. Welcome Titans, to me, was the best we've done, and I'm concerned that we won't be able to do better next year, but we will strive to do that. Having the student voice is what it's all about, and to be able to hear from students, I think, was very important for us. Just want to brag a little bit about some of the new programs that we have that started this fall. Megatronic Certificate, Water Quality Technician Certificate, Data Technology AS Degree, it's a computer information technology program. Educational Interpreting is a part of our Baccalaureate Educational Studies Program. Advanced Manufacturing, which is a part of our Engineering Technology AS Degree, and Sports Management. And so, from the different community meetings we're having, we're learning a lot about what we need to offer to the communities to help students gain the, you know, economic mobility that we're striving for. We're working on a few new programs on medical equipment repair, early childhood development, and those are pending some of the Department of Ed approvals. I think I want to brag a little bit about our nursing program. We've expanded 44 slots this fall, and with that, we've added about 22 slots to our new students who start the nursing program, and the rest are students in other levels, especially Level 4, to help students kind of re-enter. And we're looking at ways to expand a lot of our existing programs, and I want to give Dr. Louisiana Lewis props for doing that, because, as you know, we have more nursing applicants than we have slots available, and she's doing a good job in making those improvements. Our faculty and others have been really talking about mental health and the mental health issue. That's been happening nationally, about making sure students are healthy physically and mentally. And so, from that, we applied for a Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration grant, and we received that grant. And the whole purpose is to help us enhance awareness and access to mental health services. And so, I want to congratulate our Grants Office and others who've been involved, from the, the faculty, Dr. Cooper and others, who've really helped us move that along. And so, looking forward, Dr. Connor, to your leadership and others in making that happen. And the list goes on and on about what we have done, and I don't want to take up a lot of time, but those are just some of the top things that I think the board should be proud of, of the work of the team.
Thank you very much. I don't have any public comments in front of me. With that, we will move to the review and approval of minutes. I'd like to take these together. There was, we have minutes from our board meeting on June 19th. We also have minutes in your packet from our workshop on August 3rd. So, is there a motion to approve both of those?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. And that moves us to our monthly reports. Anything this month, Ms. Gardner?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, I do have a brief report. I'd like to just briefly reintroduce the Board of Trustees, Board Governor's booklet. It's updated with new laws, Board of Education rules. There's different topics, links. I just wanted to let you know that the electronic version is on the board website, and all of the links are live links to the statutes. So, it covers board governance, governance of our direct support organizations, and also some K-12 statutes for our charter school. On a related note, we also have a new SACS requirement. It's very short, so one sentence, but it basically says, under section 4.2G, that the governing board defines and regularly evaluates its responsibilities and expectations. So, there is a new requirement for self-examination of the governing board. There's some guidance in the resource manual for SACS, and basically, it says that a good starting place is to start with a self-examination of the issues that are part of the principles of accreditation, and also their own questions to consider, which are 15 questions that they have in, inside the resource. They said that some boards will maybe make it a little bit more formalized with a retreat or with having it facilitated, but basically, they're, they're looking at, starting off with like a survey or questionnaire and suggesting that as a first step. I did discuss it with Dr. Crawford, and she said that she believes that a good way to start is to provide you with that information and also the questions, and that perhaps that would set up a good baseline for the first year, so that on an annual basis, the board would be able to do a self-examination, and this would be, for our future accreditation, this would be a requirement to, to document that we've had that self-examination. There are some good resources with ACCT. I could pull those together. Also, some examples, there's been one other state college that has already facilitated a self-exam. It's a school that is looking at accreditation this year, so they're, they went ahead and started working on it. There are some good materials at the Association of Governing Boards. There's several that I can go ahead and provide to the board, and if there's anything else that might be helpful, we can put those in the Friday packets and have you start taking a look at it. So, that would be my suggestion, is to perhaps make the first year based off of the preliminary questions to consider that are suggested from SACS.
Ms. Gardner, is anyone, if there's a simple survey or questionnaire at the beginning of this process, who reviews that once it's filled out and submitted? Is it for ourselves? Is it for the rest of the board?
Okay.
What's their intent?
What they actually say in their guidances, that how it's done for each board is best determined by that board. So, there is no requirement that it be done a certain way, but only a requirement that it be done and documented for SACS purposes. So, it could be done in any number of ways. I would say the simplest being the trustees filling out a questionnaire with the, the questions that are suggested. I would imagine that having that as a baseline, that if there's any findings or things that would be important for the board moving forward, that, that year over year, those could be part of the self-evaluation.
Mr. Chair, depending on the scope of the questions presented, that they would like us to self-report, perhaps we can, once we see those questions, it would be appropriate to incorporate it in our January meeting after we do our strategic plan, and to look at whether we're looking at strategic, if the questions are strategic in nature, it might give us some guidance. Or even in the summer, in conjunction with the president's evaluation.
Let's, Ms. Gardner, if you can send us the information that you do have and some of the resources that you mentioned, we'll review it, and then, based upon what, what it's looking like, they're, they're looking for, we can make a decision as to when we want to do it. Thank you.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Okay. Strategic focus and planning. Dr. Renard and Dr. Crawford, Fall 2008 Enrollment Summary. Thank you all so much.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and President Williams.
Good morning.
I'm Pat Renard, Associate Vice President for Enrollment Services, and with Dr. Crawford, we're going to give you an update on our fall enrollment. As you know, classes began last Monday. The data that you will see in this presentation is as of the end of the week, so it's through the first week of courses. I'm gonna start off with some good news. We planned our 2017-18 year to be down 3.5% when it was all said and done. We, our SSH student semester hours, we were only down minus 2.2%, so want to share that, and I think we can build off of that good news. So, as of the end of the week, first week of classes, this is where we landed. Our overall head count is minus 3.6%. Our overall student semester hours is minus 2.7%. We did plan to be down 3%, so we're somewhat happy with that. I think we're optimistic that there is room for improvement as we go and focus on the 12-week express session that starts in September and the eight-week two-session that starts in October. This is student semester hours by lower division and upper division, pretty much the same. I would draw your attention to the fact that we're down again in upper division. It's the second semester in a row where we've been down. I think in the history of our baccalaureate programs, we may have only been down three or four terms since 2001, I think, is when we offered our first baccalaureate program. I'm gonna turn it over to Sabrina, who's gonna talk a little bit more in detail on baccalaureate SSH.
So, obviously, we wanted to dig into the programs a little bit, and I'd like to start with some positive news. Our education programs have traditionally been negative after the changes in the general knowledge exam was providing a barrier for our students to enter into those programs. We did create two new sub-plans in our Ed Studies. One is for American Sign Language, and the other is in early childhood, and this is the first time that we've seen significant gains back in our education programs. And looking at those that are showing some declines in enrollment or in SSH, there's three programs. If we look at Biology and Business and Vet Tech, what those three programs have been seeing is a shift from full-time student status to a part-time student status. And so, with a lower enrollment overall and then students taking less courses, that's what you're seeing, those shifts. Interestingly enough, Vet Tech actually has more enrollment this year by five students than they did over last year, but they've actually had more students taking part-time courses. In regards to nursing, what our nursing programs have discovered is that there, the nurses are really looking at professional certificates and not the BSN as much anymore. That's what they're being asked to receive first, so we are doing some discussions about that. Public safety, this is something that we've all acknowledged with the new changes and reforms in the schools, with the requirement of having safety officers in the schools, and with the actual glut of openings in, for public safety officers, most current public safety officers are doing high levels of overtime and just don't have the time to dedicate to their studies right now. And in regards to CCIT, which has been traditionally on an upswing, the, Dr. Stewart had actually spent some time with his faculty members, talking to students, and what they've discovered is that the, the students are suggesting that the program has too high of a level of management focus on it, and they would really prefer to have sub-plans that are more heavily invested in the programming. So, they're working this year to reinvent some of their AS degree programs to meet students' needs better.
This slide looks at our enrollment type. Continuing student is a student who's been enrolled in at least one of the last three semesters. New student is a student taking a course at SPC for the first time this fall. And readmit student is someone who's come back after being out a year or, or more, or longer. So, you see, we're minus 3.2 in continuing students, minus 6.7 in new students. There's a little bit of a nuance in that number. New student, as I said, is first time a student is taking a course at SPC this semester. Could be a transfer student. It could be a first-time in college student, but not every first-time in college student is a new student. And let me give you an example. If, if Ms. Bello was a senior in high school last year, Mr. Stonecifer, you were a senior in high school last year, Ms. Bello took advantage of dual enrollment, and you did not, and you both came to SPC this fall, you would be, Mr. Stonecifer, a new student, but because you had taken classes at SPC in the past, you would not be in that new student count. So, that's a little bit of a nuance there. We did experience about 150 more than usual, 150 students more than usual that took advantage of accelerated mechanisms like dual enrollment, early college, that, that came to us.
If we go back and look a little bit more into detail of, of our student population, the consistency of our, of our drops in categories of students, we've been seeing our largest drops in our white students, and follows shortly thereafter by our black students. And again, our male students are, are down slightly more than our female students. We look at age, and we consider that these are, that the employment rate is, is increasing, that our, our students who are of employment age are more likely to be dropped. There's drops consistently on all of them from 19 all the way up to 36, with those being 22 to 25, and those being 36 and above, having the largest amounts of decreases. The good news is that from an FTIC... The good news is that from an FTIC standpoint, we've been showing increases, both in head count and in overall student semester hours. And again, the ethnicity, our white students are the ones that are showing the slight, the largest declines or actually the only declines. And when we look at age, it's really our 19 to 21-year-olds, it's that traditional-age student that's showing the largest gap. So we wanted to just take a couple seconds and look at fall-to-fall retentions, and this is just of our first-time-in-college students, which is slightly different than what our retention plan looks at, which is all students. So when we break down our fall of last year's students, both by part-time and full-time, we've shown slight increases in both categories, whereas full-time students was closer to 70%. We're actually at 71% this year of retaining our students into this fall, and for part-time students, it was a clean split of 50/50, and we can see a slight shift. Basically, what this is doing for us is it's providing with us just over a half a percent of increase in retention. And it's really hard to get a benchmark for this, but the state provided one benchmark from 1516 to 1617. That's the last time they've done that. They're always a couple years behind, but, and they only do it for full-time students. And at this point, their benchmark is 65.3% return, and we're at a 71.1 or 2, sorry. And so you can see that we've been working really hard to increase that year-over-year.
Typically, we provide this report to the board. This is our public high schools in Pinellas County, all 16 of them, and the number of students that graduated with a standard high school diploma by school. We see that at 5,811. In 2017, 1,793 students came to us in the fall from that graduating class. This year, 1,829, a 2% increase. The yield is 31.5%, which is exactly the yield that we had this time last year. This is our private schools and homeschool students. We don't have the baseline data in terms of how many students graduated from these schools. We see nominal increases in both categories. And then this is from Pasco County Public Schools. We see a slight decline. One of their campuses is relatively new. It's in the Wesley Chapel area, so we're starting to see fewer students from that part of Pasco. We don't go and recruit in Pasco unless we're invited.
And last, just to talk a little bit about financial aid. This year, we awarded 16,414 students over $116 million. This is actually down 1,000 students and $3 million from last year. And one of the reasons for this is that we've received 1,500 less ICers. That's a financial aid form that students fill out, and that's actually a national issue right now, that students are filling out less financial aid forms. Two things that are note that are good news is that students are in the other grants category, which these are the grants that come from the Florida Student Scholarship and Grants Program. We have 2,300 more students this year receiving an additional $5 million in aid for that. And our student loans, we have 500 students less this year receiving loan amounts and for a grand total of $5 million. So those are two really great things for us to say. So just to quickly sum up, our head count is down negative 3.6, and our SSH is currently down negative 2.7. This was budgeted this year based upon a 3% decline in SSH. Our baccalaureate SSH is down 2.6 for reasons we just talked about. FTIC enrollment, however, are both up in head count and in SSH. Our African-American students are overall is down by 4.8, but FTIC is flat, which is great. Hispanic students have been showing the greatest gains year-over-year for the last several terms that we've been showing you this data, and we're proud to consider to continue to see that. And then our FTIC one-year retention rate has gone up about 6.6% overall, and our Pinellas County graduate starting in SPC is up 2%, and the yield is completely is flat. So when we consider what these next steps might be, obviously, we want to get to a place where we're no longer decreasing in enrollment. We have two presentations that are coming up. One is based upon retention, and one is based upon recruitment, and they're going to share a series of strategies that are really going to show you how the college is trying to move forward to reaching that zero decrease over the next few years. Are there any questions?
Is there anything we can, is there anything specific we can attribute the increase in FTIC enrollment? Anything we've done in the past year or two that has bumped that?
I think our outreach in the high schools, Mr. Stonecifer, is probably most notable. When we look at our transfer students, that's pretty flat, but we really have made, and you'll see it in the recruitment presentation, a lot of effort to have a presence in the high schools with a recruiter and an assigned advisor, so there's continuity, a familiar face.
And I would say we're also starting to have those negotiations about auto-articulating that credit that they earn, and you're going to see that continue to rise. And so those are some just new initiatives we've been focused on.
Any other questions?
I guess I have more of a comment than a question. I don't, I don't know what we can do surrounding recruitment for students that we're losing, because I had an interesting conversation with a parent last week, where he was taking his son to Santa Fe, and I'm thinking to myself, the same thing that Santa Fe is going to do in Gainesville for your students, besides you having to pay for housing and other incidentals and other things, we can do right here. I think I convinced that parent to enroll their student here as opposed to sending them there. But I know a lot of that happens. What, I just, I mean, I would like for administration, Dr. Williams, you and other people to start thinking about that, because I think a lot of students also go to where Bill Law was before.
TCC.
TCC. Yeah, trying to get into Florida State and to FAMU. And we're losing a lot of those students that are going to those particular situations that are not necessarily better situations. It's costing the parent more. I mean, is it that they have more, I don't know if they have more program. I don't think they do. I mean, I just think they're closer to these universities, and these kids are trying to, or young people are trying, the young people that are leaving high school that are going to college are trying to be closer to that atmosphere. I don't know if there's something that we can do in terms of recruiting ahead of time. Maybe a two-plus-two articulation agreement obviously is working very well with FAMU. Maybe that's something that we can consider with the other state universities and keep those young people here by accepting them now to that university if they finish here. Maybe we get them that boost enrollment, but, you know, I asked the parent, I was like, well, what is he, is he going to play a sport? Is he going, no, and he's just going there because he wants to get to University of Florida. And I said, well, you do realize if he finishes St. P. College with an AA, he can still go to University of Florida. Doesn't have to be from Santa Fe. So.
So trustee Gibbons, you're right on point, and you'll see some of that in the upcoming presentations for recruitment. And we've done a much better job in letting students know what opportunities are at SPC, but we've not done a great job. And so we've got more work to do in our communities to let them know what we offer at the college and how the two-plus-two works. We're also in the midst of working on another agreement with UCF. So we have FAMU, we have the University of South Florida, which has grown by leaps and bounds. FAMU has grown more, and we have UCF. So we're continuing to build those relationships. The other piece, they'll talk about articulation agreements with Pinellas Technical College, because we do have students who start there, and there wasn't a strong bridge between them and SPC. As you know, students who earn a credential at Pinellas Technical College, those credentials don't transfer automatically to a community college or a university. It's not a college.
Yes, it's not a college.
And so we have built bridges. Dr. Cooper and her team has done, Sabrina's been a big leader in that, a great job in building those articulations so that they can get credit for the coursework they've done there. And we've even worked on how to automate that and get that information to them as they finish that, finish at Pinellas Technical College. So I think you'll see some of that coming forward. And now that we have our full recruitment team on board and our marketing team is working on new marketing strategies, I think you'll see some more changes in what we have going forward.
Not to, I don't want to take any thunder away from this group or the next that's going to present. Have we looked at doing assessment of what these programming that other colleges have that we may or may not have that maybe, I don't know if there is anything different. I'm asking, I'm just asking the question.
We do that on purpose, because we don't want to offer the same exact programs that flood the market. So Dr. Cooper and I met yesterday, and we talked about scenography and some other programs, and we were like, okay, HCC now offers that, so we can't. So we do look at what they're offering, and then we have to look at, through feasibility study, what's going to work in our county. Just because we offer it does not mean students will get high-wage pay.
I'm sorry, Dr. Williams, I asked that wrong. Not academic programs, social programs.
Oh, okay, okay.
I know we do that for academic programs, but for social programs, we do assessments of what other colleges are doing that may or may not entice other students to come there as opposed to.
I don't think we do as great a job on that end, trustee Gibbons.
I just, I just didn't know.
Yeah, but that is something we could look at.
Any other questions in regards to enrollment summary? If not, we will move to our recruitment plan with Dr. Renard and Dr. Vittito.
Good morning, Chairman Stonecifer, board members. Dr. Williams.
Good morning.
Appreciate the opportunity to present our three-year recruitment plan. The plan was developed in collaboration with more than 100 students, staff members and faculty over the period of a number of months. The actual plan with all of its supporting data runs to more than 100 pages. I think you have the executive summary in front of you there. Today, we're just going to go over some of the high-level goals. Start out by defining recruitment. Recruitment is basically communicating the benefits and the strategic advantages of St. Petersburg College to students and people who might influence students to attend college. We'll follow up on each one of these goals that I'm going to show you with a slide or two to give a little bit more detail, but we'll start out with our big six recruitment goals for the next three years. Number one, we're going to increase the yield of Pinellas County Public High School graduates to 45%. That's from our current about 40.1%. That really is a pretty high number to recruit 45% of the graduating class of the high schools in this area. We're going to increase enrollment in our AA partnership programs by 100%, and trustee Gibbons, this is a little bit of what you were talking about. These are our programs, Fuse, Ignite. Our current enrollment in those programs is 380 approximately, and we're going to increase that to 760 students. And of course, these are programs that kind of smooth away, grease the skids for students so that their path is clearly identified to a particular program at that school, and if they complete all the components of that plan, they're guaranteed admission. We're targeting as part of our non-traditional student enrollment, and you can see the numbers there, 17,000 students identified as non-traditional students in our baccalaureate AS and certificate programs. And just to put that in perspective, the high school yield that we talk about, and as Dr. Renard said, I think we do a very good job with those students, that's about 2,200 students. So just to give you an idea of the perspective, our non-traditional students to our recent high school graduates. We simply need to increase the number of students who are applying, and so we're going to work a lot harder to get those students here. Once we get the applications, we do a pretty good job of converting them to enrollees, but we need to increase the number of applications. The Workforce Institute is really a bright spot for us. Last year, the number of students enrolled in different Workforce Institute classes increased by 23%, and under Andrea Henning's leadership, we project that she can increase that by 40%. Not only does that serve the needs of students in the community, whether it's short-term programs like the Medical Assistant Program or short-term technical seminars, it also is a good revenue generator for us. Finally, we want to increase our minority enrollment by 10%. We've seen a drop of about 3% over the last three years, and so we've identified some strategies to work on that.
Okay, before I talk about this first goal, I just want to let the board know that marketing has supported the recruitment team in the development of this plan. They have supported the retention team, and you'll see that plan in a few moments, but they're going to come back at a later meeting and give you a full report on the good work that the marketing department is doing. So this first goal is to increase our overall yield from Pinellas County schools from 40% to 45% over the next three years. So I reported earlier in the fall enrollment that we're currently at 31.5% yield for this year. Last year, when the, by the time the fall term ended, we were at 32.5%. We'll pick up more students throughout the rest of this term. Then we pick up about 5% of the graduating class that took the fall term off, they started in the spring, and then almost another 3% that took fall and spring off and started in the summer. And those are most likely our transient students who went off to university, and they're back for the summer taking a course. So outreach initiatives around this and strategies around this goal include, I want to just touch on a few of these for the sake of time. Recruitment restructuring. So about eight months ago, we completely blew up the way we had our recruitment model. It was centralized, it's now decentralized. So there is a recruiter that reports to each provost, and that recruiter can be more nimble and support the needs of the community around that campus. Secondly, I would like to talk a little bit about the increased exposure to the Titan Experience, and trustee Gibbons, this might speak to your point a moment ago. We do, I think, an admirable job of letting students know the mechanics of how to, once they apply, how to enroll, maybe some of the benefits about SPC, but we haven't really done a good job of explaining the student life, getting back to the social programs. And so from the outset, from the student, from the time the student applies, we want to start getting them exposed to the student life experience and the Titan Experience. So an initiative behind this might be to bless some of the high school seniors to some of our athletic events. I want to talk about the increase, the number of students awarded college credit in career and technical programs. So many students take career and technical education courses in high school. We've got several articulation agreements where those, the completion of those high school courses articulates to college credit. So we're letting those students know, sending them a transcript that you've already got six college credits and using that as a recruitment tool. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the good work that the provost and others do on campus with our GED programs. So the Pinellas County School Systems, they teach the GED on several of our campuses, and we go into those courses, and we recruit a good number of those students.
Well, again, the Fuse and Ignite programs, I think, have a lot of potential for us, especially for marketing, because I think when we reach out to parents and talk about a clear path for their son or daughter to go through SPC and on to FAMU or USF or whatever that institution might be, I think that's a great recruitment tool. We also have some additional resources now. We do have an appropriation that allows us to hire some outreach specialists to begin recruiting for these programs. You know, this is, this is a program that is already in place in the sense that if a student is denied admission to USF, and these are, these are pretty stellar students, but they just fell somewhat below the mark, and of course, they are raising the bar at USF, as you know, then they receive a letter from USF suggesting that they come back to SPC and consider going through our program in preparation for transferring to USF at a later date. So I think these programs have tremendous potential for us, and we are certainly working hard to grow them.
Before you leave that slide, I agree with the clear path, and I know we have these agreements with USF and FAM. But Mr. Gibbons is absolutely right when he talks about the number of students, and I don't have that data. I just, I just know that in my circle, the number of kids that want to get into UF that don't, where their parents send them to Santa Fe, because not only do they have a clear path, but they mark it on the Santa Fe website that you do XYZ and you're automatically into UF. Your degree says UF. I want to have a clearer path, not only with Fuse and Ignite, but I'd like to see a clearer path to all of them. And this is the formula. And this is the formula and while we can't guarantee admission, you do this and 90% of the students that do this get in. I think the Titan Experience is great for retention. Certainly those that experience it, that, that see a baccalaureate opportunity and they can have it here, that's perfect. But there are young people that are dead set on having a degree from where mom and dad went or where their friends are and they're loading up somewhere else. So I'd like a clearer path for all of them.
Mr. Chair, do you mind if I piggyback on that?
Not at all.
I think, I think, um, Mr. Foster is, Trustee Foster is exactly right. You know, I'll tell you, if today I had to apply to University of Florida, I would, I would not make the cut. It's just impossible. There are several schools that are like that in the state of Florida. I mean, it's starting to be the, a common theme at the university system and so FIU and FAU and all these other schools that young people have their hearts set on going to, they can't get, um, the one right down the road here, Florida Gulf Coast, I mean, people can't, people that have 3.9 GPAs are getting turned down for Florida Gulf Coast already. So I mean, these articulation agreements, I think Mr. Foster is right, if we have a clearer path, but also they're receiving letters from Florida Gulf Coast saying, if you go to St. Pete College, you finished here, you are automatically accepted if you get your AA in this particular program or whatever. I think that allows for us to have a clearer path, but also I will tell you, it's just getting harder and more competitive to get into these universities. It's not going to get any easier and we have to create that path. Now, you know, if you're not, I'm just using this gentleman because I know that his kids can get there, if you're not Bill Huff and you don't name the business school after, after yourself at University of Florida, you're just not getting in anymore unless you're an athlete. And so we just got to figure that out. Now, I think we've done an excellent job in the short amount of time we've been able to, you know, re, reignite Fuse and change it and then get the Ignite program going. I just think we need to continue down that track like we are with UCF, but I would say look at UF, Florida State, because here's the other thing, you look at Florida State, there's a trend, I was just in a meeting three or four days ago in Miami where they're saying there's a trend of South Florida students that are going to Florida State because they want to be close to the capital. They want to be in those government programs because it's so close to the capital that they can find internships and other things to help them boost their career. We got to start looking at those types of things as well, so. Thank you.
Piggyback on that, we are looking at just about every one of those colleges. You just got to take them one at a time to build those articulations. So UCF is next in line and then we're continuing to move forward. But what you need to know is every student who comes through a community college by, by way of the, the state rules is supposed to be able to gain access to a four-year school. The challenge is can they get into their college of interest? That's the, that's the challenge and so that is why Fuse exists, that is why Ignite exists, to ensure that they get into their school that they're interested in. Right now, with the partnership we built with USF and them moving to preeminent status and having more of a 4.0 GPA admission average and their willingness to let those students who did not get accepted in USF St. Pete come to SPC, that's going to be huge for us to get more students. But when we talk about building diversity, we also have to make sure we are pulling in the FAMUs and the Bethune-Cookmans because Bethune-Cookman is my next, you know, brainchild for, for that if we can do that. But I think what Chair Fosha was, I mean Chair, I'm sorry, I almost called you something else. I apologize for that. Trustee Fosha was saying, we need to get all the schools and we need to make sure that that's on the front of our website, that you will be able to gain admission if you do this, this and that. And so I know we're holding your presentation, but this is good, good dialogue and great, great feedback, great feedback.
Not to go further down, sorry, not to go further down a path that is not focused, but I'm always interested to know how our university partnership programs fit into our articulation agreements. And I, that's an honest, I mean, I'm just sincerely interested to know that because I understand just from our website that we have these university partnership programs that you can get a, at, with Embry-Riddle or with UF Pharmacy School and those other programs. And it seems like low-hanging fruit perhaps to track our AA students into those partnership programs and I didn't know if that was looked at in part of the recruitment strategy as well.
Ms. Cole, I think we'd like to bring that back.
Sure.
I know Catherine Kennedy oversees that and does a good job with that, but I'm not familiar with it, so I think, can we bring that back to you?
Sure.
Absolutely.
We can do a presentation on the UPC.
Yeah, I, I just was, thought of it in light of this. Thank you.
Okay. I'm not going to spend any more time on Ignite. Just one thing, we have 21 employees that graduated from FAMU and we are reaching out to them to be ambassadors of the Ignite program. So we have some, I think, very sound strategies to, to meet these goals. So our AS certificate and baccalaureate enrollment over the last two years has gone down 8.3%. So we would like to increase that over the next three years by 5%. Some of the strategies around that, I'll just touch on a few. And we're currently doing the first bullet, they're auto-admitting AS students into our baccalaureate programs. So as a student's in their last semester of their associate in science degree program, we send them a communication that with their consent, we will admit them into the associated baccalaureate program and that, that seems to be pretty effective. Complete Florida is another one I'll just briefly mention that is an organization, is a statewide organization that we participate in. They are trying to go after the nearly 3 million adults in Florida that have some college credit but no credential and to entice them to come back to college and complete their degree, be it an AS degree or a baccalaureate degree online. So we, we have dedicated advisors that when a student comes to us through that organization, we work with, with those students. I would just like to thank Chair Stonecypher for his involvement with Titan Thursdays. Last month, Titan Thursday is a webinar, it's a live webinar that is recorded that promotes our, both our academic programs and sometimes we focus on services. But last month, Chair Stonecypher gave us a tour of his business and then did a live webinar to promote the Entrepreneurship Certificate Program. And we've had over 400 views on, on that recording, so thank you so much. As Dr. Vittito mentioned, this is a goal of ours because as you'll see in a moment, we do a good job, once a student applies, to get them enrolled. So that part of the funnel, we do pretty good. We are losing our ground though in the number of applications that we are getting in the door. So that is, that is the number one goal of our recruiters, is to get them from a prospect to an applicant. Yes, sir.
So Dr. Renard, this brings me to, I had a question for you and you may not know the answer and that's okay, but I just, my question is, is it that we're losing ground in applications or is the amount of people that are getting actual high school diplomas decreasing? Do we know that?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Actually, it's going to start declining and as, as I was going to talk about in the next slide or two, we've got to go after the adult learner. Because we know from data that we're getting from the state and from the county that we're about at the peak with the high school graduates and for the next few years, it's going to start to go down. So while we can do, I think, a better job of penetration in that market, we're going to have to really go after the adult learner.
So out of, so 2017, how many people applied?
This is calendar year, not academic.
This is total applications.
Total applications.
And then how many do we, how many have we actually kept, enrolled and, and actually keep? Do you know that?
You'll see a slide in a moment.
Okay, go ahead.
When a student applies, we keep, we enroll about 61%. So we lose about 39, but that's better than the average. For a community college, that's better than the average. So quickly, I just want to touch on a couple of these. One of the adult learner populations is veterans, for example, and we have got some new leadership in our Veteran Services Department and I think you'll see some revitalized ways that we go out and recruit veteran students. I'll mention also the employers who offer tuition reimbursement. We just got a list from our Student Financial Department. So we're going to aggressively go after those employers and see, is there any opportunity for us to work together? Do you have any training needs that, that aren't being met that we can meet?
As I said before, we've had a, a great increase in the number of students participating in the Workforce Institute courses, up from 23% last year and we anticipate that we can increase that by 40% over the next three years and frankly, I think it'll be even greater than that. We've started offering courses, like the Medical Assistant is offered at the Midtown Campus and also on the Clearwater Campus. That's a short-term program, eight to 10 weeks that can put someone to work. We have the Phlebotomy Program now, offered on the Clearwater Campus, the Orthotics Fitter Program. Mechatronics was mentioned earlier, that's preparing students in what we might think of as industrial maintenance, hydraulics, pneumatics, basic electronic, electromechanical systems. There are many, many more opportunities out there and I have every confidence in Andrea's team and being able to exploit those, but everything from cybersecurity to cloud computing to perhaps technicians in brewing industry, process control, all kinds of things that we can do with people. And as I said, if you look at the, the plan in depth, Andrea's made a, a revenue increase commitment as well. I think this can be a, a good source of revenue for the college as well as meeting student Andrea has a number of strategies, you know, community engagement, of course, new, new programs, moving the programs out to all of our campuses and then tying those programs into our credit programs, because eventually those folks, we hope, will want to come back and attain a degree. We spoke briefly about our minority enrollment. As you can see, at least we have a little bit of upward lift in the last year, looking at our Hispanic Latino enrollment. We've worked really hard with that. We're out in the community, we're involved in all kinds of initiatives with that community. You can see some of the things that we've been doing here. We've got a new initiative with Head Start Pinellas. We can reach out to the parents as well as the children involved in those programs, the Hispanic Leadership Council, Operation Graduate, the Impact Program. So we're working hard on that and I think we'll see some success.
This is our last slide. I just want the board to understand that we've got a number of strategies, you just have a sample in, in your executive summary. They are measurable objectives. These are some weekly scorecards, for example. When a prospect goes to our website, completes a online form, a request for information form, there's a series of, of events that happen, including a phone call. So you see the, the monthly yield or the yield after 30 days there with the RFIs as well as our application to enrollment. So we're at 61% this fall compared to 59% last fall. Happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Chair. With respect to the last slide, with the application to enrollment, I recall last year, we were talking about interviewing students to find out where that gap and I don't know if that process was specific to this gap or another one we've talked about. But I'm curious if we know that yield, where those student, potential students are going? If they were motivated enough to apply but yet didn't enroll, is it because they're enrolling other places, they did not get financial aid, they, do we have any idea about that? And it would be hard for somebody who's chosen not to enroll to then respond to our inquiries, so I appreciate that as well.
That's a great question, because these students, as you see on the slide, these have paid, there's an application fee associated with the application. So they've paid the app fee, there's some skin in the game. Some of those students do go elsewhere, some of them delay, they may have said they're going to come in the fall, but they may start in the spring.
Okay.
So maybe we can try to get more information on that to, to share with you what's happening with the ones that are not coming, not enrolled?
Yeah, I mean, I think we've made such a big effort the past 18 months to increase recruitment for applications and if we have 40% of, or 39% opportunity with people who have chosen to apply and paid the money, it seems like enrollment could go up there.
So what's a challenge for us is at the community colleges, we don't know who's going to come until they come.
Right.
Some of them apply just in case they don't get into the universities.
Right.
And if they do, they just, some apply last minute, have not done their aid. So we should be able to gather some of that and some do come later. So we'll, we'll try to do that. One of the things that we talked about was should we have a deadline for applying instead of it being as open and the rolling? And there's pros and cons to, to both of those, so we could definitely bring you guys some information back on that.
Please do.
Mr. Chair, I say, I say a good point about, that was one of the points I was going to make, Dr. Williams, about people applying just in case. We should engage them more, because most of the time, they don't get in and then they're scrambling trying to find. We should engage them more about, centered along the lines of what Trustee Foster was talking about in terms of University of Florida and other places, that we can engage them, say, look, we can get you there, but you need to come now, right? You need to commit now. The other thing is, please don't look for state employees because they get an exemption so we don't get any money when they come. But one of the things is, is have we thought about making a list or researching all the companies that have tuition assistance in the county and marketing only to those companies? Because, and I was in school, again, my master's, I think Dr. Carver was with me, I think 70% of the people that were in our class were tuition reimbursement by their company and they have to do well, they have to get C's. So you're going to retain them, most of the time, they're going to do well because the company has skin in the game, they have skin in the game. And so have we thought about doing that?
Yes, that was a part of our recommendation.
And then the other thing is, thank you, Dr. Renard, for talking about the student life portion, I appreciate that. And then how many of, have we looked at, I know one of the things, I was in Miami-Dade with the chancellor and some other folks last week and they, they know how many languages they have in Dade County. And they, they spend a lot more time trying to close that gap in terms of language barrier to get students to come to the college in, at the high school level. So they send people out to the high school level to make sure that they, they can engage those communities earlier. How many people do we have, or do we know how many languages we have in the county, in Pinellas County right now? And then the second thing is, in terms of our recruiters, I know we're in the phase of having these recruiters answer to provost, how many different languages do we speak so that we're able to engage the parents, grandparents? Most of the times what we've, what I hear in Dade County is what they're saying is, that is there, usually there's a lot of kids that a grandparent is raising them. So there is a language barrier. So they can't push them to go to college because they know nothing about college. So we have to have somebody who can engage the grandparent, whoever, the parent, whoever is raising them. So do we have that kind of data based upon our staff?
So I don't know if we've done the study for the county on the languages, but we have done a survey for the college on how many of our employees speak different languages and what that looks like. We've changed our website that they will be able to choose Spanish or English to be able to, to read through that and we try to make sure we know who at the college speaks what language. I think the Hispanic growth has been because of a lot of that work and sending letters out to our Spanish-speaking families in Spanish and things of that nature. I don't think we have done a lot in the other languages and so that may be an area that we could take back and go.
Because we need to know what those pockets are. I know for sure, you went to St. Pete High, but Bill Foster and I went northeast, of course, and up near 54th Ave North, there is a huge. course, and up near 54th Ave. North, there is a huge Asian community that I don't think gets engaged on many things, not just in the college. I'm just saying on many things. And so, a lot of those students, we may be losing to P-Tech, or whoever else, because we just don't, we're not engaging them. So, I would like to know those pockets of other languages. There's a big, Bill, is it Armenian on 4th Street North? Down where the Wing House used to be, across the street, they have that Armenian Plaza there. And so, there, I mean, and there's an Armenian church up on 4th Street North. That's a huge community behind Wendy's up there. It's a huge community back there. So, I'm just saying, that's in St. Pete. I would imagine that if you keep going countywide, there are pockets of these individuals. And you know, it may seem like a small thing, but if you get 10 or 15 from each one of those pockets, you're growing. And then, the word starts to take off that, you know, the college is for us in trying to help us, even though we have language barriers and impediments, we're still trying to push themselves. Just think about that as you move forward.
We need to press on.
Let's go.
Thank you both. If we could, can, in the next six to 12 months at an upcoming board meeting, would it be possible to get an update on some of the strategies?
Yeah.
We have great benchmarks with specific numbers that we're looking. I love the very straightforward three-year goal that we have. But if we could just get an update on how some of these strategies are playing out, before we see some of the numbers coming back a year from now, that'd be great.
Mr. Chair, I'd be willing to, if Dr. Williams and her staff, I would take some of my time to give some input into what I think would be helpful. If any other board member wanted to do that, I think that'd be good, too. But I'm willing to do that.
Thank you.
Because this is our number one priority, is getting people in.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, I know you want to press on, but I would like to see those strategies include more than just a line that we're going to target veterans. I think that's a big population. I think, when I look at the website, well, first I Googled "St. Pete College Veteran Services," and the first thing that came up was St. Leo, so.
Yeah, they pay for that.
I found it, and then, there's a web presence, and then I went to events. There are no events scheduled. I think with the GI Bill, with the benefits that we have, I don't know if we're allowed to recruit at MacDill, or have any presence, but that's a huge population. We've got reserve sites throughout the Tampa Bay area. We've got a big one right here in Pinellas Park. I don't, I'd like to see a strategy with that.
Dr. Kemp has a strong plan. You know, it's hard to bring all the pieces in without just taking up the whole meeting. But I do believe you'll be pleased to see what that strategy is going forward, and what we're doing. And we'll be bringing back more of those types of programs throughout the year, so that you can see the progress in those areas. So, we'll be sure to bring that back to you, Trustee Foster.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to retention plan now with Dr. Cooper and Mr. Chang. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and President Williams, good morning again. It is my pleasure to present to you our retention plan. You also have an executive summary, and we're just going to give you some highlights of the plan this morning. First of all, what I'd like to do is begin by defining some of the variables that we'll be looking at in regards to retention. The first of these is what we call persistence. And this is students who stay with us from term to term. So, we'll be looking at those students who are with us this fall. Are they still with us in the spring? Progression is looking at students' successful course completion, and are they progressing through their program? Retention, as you've already heard this morning, is fall-to-fall return rate. So, are those students who are with us this fall, still going to be with us next fall? And then, completion, are students gaining some credential of value that will improve their job opportunities, or their transfer opportunities, if they are planning to continue their education? If we go back and we look at the last two years of data in regards to retention, you can see when we look at all students, and we obviously look at those that have graduated during that time period, but also those that have returned, we're at about a 68.3% between a 68.3% and 68.8% retention rate overall. When we look, however, at our first-time-in-college students, that is lower, and is not moving in the right direction. So, this is a very, it's a very important initiative in regards to keeping the students who come to us. Some other background information, you may recall back at the Strategic Workshop with the board, in December of 2016, we were asked to come up with a college-wide retention plan. We have been working on that. There have been several collaborative labs, discussions at the Executive Leadership Council, college-wide subcommittees, and today, we are here with that plan. We also know that there is a significance to retention, because two of the factors associated with the state performance funding metrics include retention and completion. Now, some of the challenges with these factors is that they are not based on current data. It's based on previous year's data. So, changes we make today may not influence next year's funding, but we know it's the right thing to do, and hopefully, eventually, we will be able to move from the silver status to the gold status. One of the comprehensive improvement strategies, and one of the reasons for entering into the Academic Pathways Project, was to improve retention and completion of our students. Along with the academic pathways, we have a number of key performance indicators that we review on a regular basis. And so, we've set three-year goals associated with these performance indicators. The first is course completion. We would like to increase that by 3% over the three years. We want to increase persistence by 3%. We also know that students who are able to complete their Gateway Math and English courses within their first year are more likely to persevere and complete. So, we would like to increase that by 2.2%. And then, the credit momentum, the number of credit hours that students are not just attempting, but completing successfully, seeing an increase there by 1.5%. We have some data for you in the last two years in regards to how we're doing. Just like to highlight a few of those for you. Students who earn six college credits in their first term has increased, as you can see. Also, students who have earned 12 credit hours in their first term has slightly increased. So, we'd like to continue that pattern. However, if you look down to students who attempted 15 credit hours in their first term, that is moving down. You heard this morning how many more students are taking fewer courses and operating on a part-time basis. So, that's probably indicative of the fact that we have more part-time students than full-time students. Also, in regards to completing college math in their first year, we are seeing improvement there, as well as completing math and English in their first year. So, we're hoping to continue those trends. Again, with persistence, we see an uptick of about 1%. And also, in regards to the number of college credits completed, not just attempted, we are, again, seeing improvement. So, all that we're doing with the Academic Pathways Projects, the Career and Academic Communities, are tied to improving these results. Like to talk about some of those strategies, or highlight a few of those. As you know, the faculty governance organization, and our Center of Excellence for Teaching and Learning, along with our deans, have been working on coming up with some strategies for improving the students' learning experience in the classroom. And so, some things that we are going to be tracking and making sure are in place are, first of all, we want the course syllabus for all the courses to be available at a minimum three days prior to the start. And within each of those syllabi, there will be clear expectations for the students in regards to how to succeed in this particular course, and what they can expect from their faculty member. We also want to make sure that all faculty are appropriately using the grade book as a success strategy for our students, because our students need to know, need to have regular ongoing feedback as to how they are doing in any course, so they know what adjustments they need to make along the way, rather than not being aware of where they are in the course. So, we'll be tracking that information, starting in the spring. They're working on that programming, so that we can actually track that. We would expect faculty to provide feedback in their grade book on a weekly basis, in eight, 10, and 12-week courses, and at a minimum, every other week, within the 16-week courses. We also will be, of course, monitoring the weekly number of withdrawals, and that is to identify what's the reason for students withdrawing. Last year, we saw the largest number of students saying it was work-related, but we feel that there's more we can do, because many times, that student possibly could shift to an online course that's the same as the one that they're in, so they can still complete. So, the deans have been working very diligently with students to address that. But we also want to be proactive in identifying, are there barriers? Are there certain times in the year when we see a rise in the number of withdrawals? So that we can address those, and of course, be proactive, and hopefully, decrease the number of students withdrawing. Then, there'll also be proactive outreach and sharing amongst the faculty of various communication strategies, best practices, or promising practices, in how to engage students in their classes who seem to be unengaged, so that they have, obviously, an opportunity to learn and move forward. Several things that we'll be looking at in regards to the online modality will be for identifying and contact faculty that may be missing course items prior to the start of the term. Also, making sure that faculty are using all the tools that are available to them in my courses, such as the Spark tool, which allows them to reach out to a student, send a text, and say, "I noticed they haven't logged in," or "I noticed you didn't turn in your work. How can I help?" Also, we want to decrease the faculty response time to students. It's very difficult for students in an online course, as we heard at the Welcome Titans event, if they don't hear from the faculty member, and they're trying to move forward within the course. So, these are things that we're looking at improving, so that we can improve students' course completion. In regards to persistence, some of the strategies here is, we know that research says that students who are engaged, not only in the classroom, but outside the classroom, are more likely to stay with us. They build relationships, whether those are peer-to-peer, with other members of the college, or faculty. So, we're going to use a number of strategies to see how we are doing in that regard, so that we can improve student participation in activities, and increase particularly within the career and academic community, participation of our students. So, we'll be gathering information from what's called an Engage for Change Survey. This gathers information from students itself, report about different service learning activities that they're involved in. We'd also like to improve the learning resources, and so, they're going to be using the Point of Service Survey as a way to determine what are some things they can do differently to better engage the students in using those resources, also engage and build relationships with the faculty, so they're partnering together to provide this resource to students within any of our courses. We want to expand the outreach to diverse populations. Our data shows that there are some differences in regards to the use of the service. And then, we also want to increase the usage of the online learning resources and services, because we know in some instances, students may get into an online course and not truly understand, or be as prepared as they need to be. And so, we want to make sure that they're using those resources. I'm going to turn it over to Dean Chang, who's going to share some information about Gateway and Math/English strategies.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cooper. Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Williams. Some time ago, we presented on the completion milestones to you, and stressed the importance of students completing the writing and math requirements in a timely fashion. As Dr. Cooper mentioned earlier, the more students complete their English and math in a timely manner, the greater the chances of them completing their degree. And we have since revised the procedure change to ensure the earlier completion. Students will begin the writing sequence within the first six college credits completed, and begin the math sequence within the first 12 college credits completed. And we know that with math in particular, students, for various reasons, wait sometimes towards the very end, before they begin the math, and so, the completion milestones will help ensure that they start earlier. And speaking of math, we have been working very closely with the math faculty on reviewing and revising the current college-level math pathways, designed to provide more accelerated and streamlined access. I would like to take a moment to thank the math faculty for the hard work thus far, as well as the work in the coming months. Just to give you a little bit of a background, before we talk about these sample math pathways with you, we currently have two math courses for which students are taking, and that they receive only college elective credit, as opposed to college math credit. They are MAT 1033 Intermediate Algebra, and MAT 1100 Explorations of Math and Quantitative Reasoning. Once the revised math pathways are fully implemented, those two courses will be phased out, and the content from those two courses will be incorporated into the college math courses where appropriate. So, I just want to let you know that. Now, if you look at the pathway on the left, for example, if I'm Flex Placement, and I'm a Fine Arts, or Public Safety, or Paralegal Studies major, as an example, the degree requirements would involve Liberal Arts Math pathway. As a student, I would be able to enroll directly into either Liberal Arts Math I and/or Liberal Arts Math II. If I'm a Flex Placement student, and my degree requirements involve statistics, for example, nursing, as an example, then I would first register for Liberal Arts Math I, and upon completion of that course, register for the elementary statistics class. And if I'm a student whose degree goals involve college algebra, then depending on where I would, my comfort level would be, then I would enroll into either the college algebra course, or a combined intermediate algebra/collge algebra course, along with a prerequisite. And then, upon completion of either course, I would then progress to the next course in the sequence for which college algebra is a prerequisite. And one last note, if, we may have traditional placement students who would require developmental math. If they're in that situation, they will complete whatever developmental math course that they need, prior to entering one of the above pathways that you see. But the amount of time that they would spend in developmental math would just be, at most, one semester. So, it's a very quick amount of time that they would spend, before they would be able to complete their degree requirements, as pertains to math. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Okay. And so, then, in regards to credit momentum, some of the strategies will include, in our career and academic communities, each of the groups are identifying milestones for every 15 credit hours, and most of our programs have an average of 60 credit hours. And those are academic, as well as student services milestones, that may identify how to accelerate students through their program, or maybe a barrier, so what can we do to assist? So, for example, we know many of the students who want to get into our health programs may have difficulty with anatomy and physiology. So, let's have learning resources built into those courses, then, opportunities to remediate, so it's just in time, rather than waiting until the student fails that course, and then has to repeat it. So, those are some of the things that we'll be doing. Another example would be in the College of Ed, they want to make sure that students get a field experience early on, so they have a good idea of what's involved in being part of education. We will be, obviously, monitoring this information, to make sure that we are helping students to progress through their program, and that will take place in the fall and the spring at our Pathways Council meeting. Then, for our first-time-ever-in-college students, these are students who have had no dual enrollment, no college experience whatsoever, probably our greatest-at-risk group. So, we're forming a joint task force, that's made up of members of Academic Affairs, as well as Student Services, to not only monitor how our first-time-ever-in-college students are doing, but reach out to them, and see what we can do to provide additional support and encouragement. So, they feel that there's a connection, that there's somebody who cares about their success, that they're not just adrift and afloat by themselves. And so, we'll be looking at all of this data on an ongoing basis. And now, are there any questions?
Ms. Cole?
I just wanted to compliment Dr. Williams, and all of you all this morning, and your teams, for these three specific presentations. I know we sit up here and talk about how, what are we doing, and how are we doing it, and give some very broad expectations, and you've really done an amazing job, boiling it down to some specific strategies that we can understand, and that make sense, and that put numbers to it, to allow us to meet those broad goals that we've set for you all. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you all very much. We'll move to budget and finance. Ms. Jeanette Hunt.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Board trustees, Dr. Williams. This morning, I will give you a report on our fiscal year 1718 year-end budget report. First, we'll look at a slide on our revenue. And before I get started, I just want to explain something. Earlier today in the presentation that Dr. Renard gave, he gave you a comparison of our student semester hours. What he compares is the actual student semester hours of the prior fiscal year to the actual of the fiscal year 1718. This report compares the budgeted student semester hours to the actual student semester hours. So you see here for fiscal year 1718, we ended the year with, our budget was 61.2 million. We brought in 61.8 million dollars, which was 101% of our budget. Next, our state funding, we brought in 71.8 million. You see that percentage there of 101%. That 0.1% was a Florida retirement adjustment that they made of about $43,000. Next, our other revenues, we brought in 5.5 million. This includes the Pinellas County School Board agreement. It also includes use of facilities, dividends, indirect costs. And then our fund transfers in is our transfers in from auxiliary. We budgeted at $3.8 million. We actually brought in $3.2 million and that's because we only bring in what we actually need according to the auxiliary. I am very pleased to report, we budgeted $1.8 million for our reserves. We dipped into our reserves, $385,000, coming in at a total revenue of $142.8 million. Again, this is a chart that you've seen throughout the fiscal year where we projected at the end what our tuition would be. We see here that our tuition-only amount was 51.2 million. Next, we'll look at our expenditures and we see here first our personnel and benefits. We see that we totaled 113.3 million. If you notice, two line items, we went a little bit over budget. That was the adjunct supplemental. We're doing a deep analysis to look at that line item to get ahead of where we are in this fiscal year. And then also you see our other benefits at 12.1 million. This attributes to sometimes with the timing of the Florida retirement system rate increase, sometimes we receive it after we've already accounted for the budget. And then our current expense, 27.4 million, capital 2 million, coming in at $142.8 million. So I wanted to give some year-end highlights for this fiscal year. One, as I mentioned earlier, our revenue for our tuition budget was 61.2 million. We actually brought in 628,000 above that budgeted amount. This slide is basically asked the question of, how much does our actual revenue support our budget? And so when we compare the prior year to fiscal year 1718 and we remove the reserves amount, we know that in the prior year, our actual revenues represented 97% of our budget when in this fiscal year, we ended with approximately 100%. Again, we compare the prior year to the fiscal year 1718 just to look at our expense difference. We spent $5.8 million less than we did in the prior year. And all these contribute to less usage of our reserve. And so although again, we budgeted 1.8 million, we actually used 385,000. This represents 1/3% of our reliance on the reserve, which brings us closer to our goal of not using any reserve in fiscal year 1920. Any questions on the year-end report? All right. So now we wanted to, I wanted to move on to update for our budget 1819. When we last met in June 19th, you approved a board, a budget of 142.9 million. Included in that budget was performance funding revenue of $3.5 million. Since then, we've received that we are in the goal status as Dr. Cooper mentioned earlier. I'm sorry.
We want the goal.
I'm projecting goal.
I almost said excited.
We will volunteer to sign.
So that was prophetic.
We're going to get that.
Yeah. So we were in the silver category. We received 3.5 million, as you all are familiar. $30 million of that comes from the state investment. The other 30 million of the performance funding comes from the 28 institutions. Of that, we received 1.7 million of our institutional investment, another 1.7 for the state investment. What that equates to, the difference of what you approved versus what we actually received was $324 more. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. You all have the Human Resources Personnel Report in front of you. If I could have a motion to approve that as presented.
Second?
Before you vote.
Your presentation.
I always look at travel. I pay special attention to traveling and the expense versus the benefit. I like these two. The estimated cost to the college is zero. The estimated cost to the college is zero. So keep bringing those.
All right.
I like those.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Still moved?
That's on 1A.
That is on 1A, just the personnel report. And that moves us to our Health Insurance 2019 Plan Alternatives with Ms. Michelle Mantega. Thank you for your patience, Michelle.
Good morning, Dr. Williams, Trustee Stone Cypher, members of the board. I'm Michelle Mantega, Senior Manager of Benefits and Wellness. Today, we'll be presenting some plan alternatives for the 2019 Employee Health Insurance Plan. Most of what we're about to go through was shared at the Board Workshop last, two weeks ago, but we have expanded on some areas. At the end of the presentation, we'll be asking you all to approve and vote on one plan for us to implement for 2019. The snapshot of where we're at, our claim costs are continuing to increase. 2017 through 2020, we're projected to have 10% increases in claim costs. 2018 is already trending 25% over where we were at this time last year. Our high-dollar claims are continuing to rise as well. As of the end of June of this year, we already have 31 claims exceeding $50,000. So we're already over what the industry norm would be for an entire year. Out of those 31 claims, 58 of those are for chronic diseases, which means these are ongoing health issues that aren't something that's quickly resolved or drops off of our claims. And all this has just fed into the fact that it's decreasing the balance in our self-funded account. So at the end of June, we were 32% lower in our account than we were at at the end of 2017. So for the plans that we're about to look at, the goal of these changes is to allow St. Pete College to maintain our safe harbor requirement. As you know, safe harbor requires us to maintain 17% of our total claims cost and our self-funded account balance at all times. The plan changes also will align the planned costs to the current claim spend so that we're no longer running at a monthly deficit on our actual expense for the health insurance. Ideally, we're going to be minimizing the cash infusions needed in future years. And then it also is going to shift the cost share, which makes the plans more sustainable longer term so that we're not coming back every single year doing significant plan changes and premium changes. And there are some assumptions that were made for these plans, so we're going to go through those first so that we're all clear of what those assumptions are before we get into them. First and foremost, St. Pete College, it needs to contribute the 3.5 million to pass safe harbor for 2018. Now, that number is an estimation based off of our current claims. That number can go up and it can go down. But all of the plans that we're looking at are assuming that we do what is necessary to meet safe harbor for 2018. We're also planning on some plan migration. For Plans 1 through 4, it's relatively minimal migration anticipated, which is that we're expecting about a 5% shift of employees onto the High Deductible Health Plan. For Plan 5, it'd be a larger shift. We're expecting a split closer to 60-40 with 60% of employees on the High Deductible Health Plan. We'll get into why and how that will work once we're looking at Plan 5. And then we're also assuming that the college is going to continue funding the plans at the current level we're funding at now. There's a few plans that will ask for additional funding, so you'll see those. But at the least, that we will maintain our funding where it's at now. And then I also want to touch on that you will see projections of premiums and projections of cash infusions on certain plans. These projections are based off of what our claims do. So if our claims go up, those numbers may have to fluctuate a little. The projections that we made are based off of our projected claims as of now. So we're still continuing on a 10% increase that we're expecting and that's what those projections reflect. I just want to put that out there that that may fluctuate depending on what our actual claims do. So this is what we currently have, just as a recap of what the existing 2018 plans are for all St. Pete College budgeted employees. We have three plans that are offered, a High Deductible Health Plan and then two traditional plans, the OA Select and the Point of Service Plan. The Point of Service Plan is the only plan with an out-of-network option. The High Deductible Health Plan is the only plan that is offered to employees hired after 2014. Any employees that are in the OA Select or the Point of Service Plan that choose to move to the High Deductible Health Plan, it's like a one-way street, they can't move back. So right now, those plans are closed. So we just want to share that now. You can see what the deductibles are. The co-insurance is at 20% for the High Deductible and 10% for the OA Select and Point of Service. It's important because you'll see that change on pretty much every plan that we're looking at. So I just want to put that out there as these are our existing plans. So moving into the alternatives that we are discussing today, our first is Alternate 1. This plan would keep the existing plans as they are, so there would be no changes to the deductibles, co-insurance, max out-of-pocket. The existing 2018 plans would stay in place for 2019. There would be increases to the employee premiums. For 2019, it would be a 15% increase on all plans to employees. For 2020, we're projecting a 7% increase and for 2021, a 6% increase. And this would be to all three plans on the employee premium side. This plan would require an additional employer contribution of about $1.1 million. So that is on top of what the college already pays for. And so then you can see the actuarial values shift a little bit. Right now, we're at 90-10, but with the increase in the premiums, they dropped just a little bit. So they'd still be gold, gold-platinum level plans across all three plans. You can see that down at the bottom. Alternate 2, we now have two options for, so there's going to be an Option A and an Option B. So we'll try to be clear about which options we're looking at. The goal with Alternate 2 is to create three actuarially unique plans. So what this plan does is it turns the High Deductible Health Plan into a silver level plan, the OA Select into a gold level plan, and the Point of Service into a platinum level plan. The yellow highlighted cells, or yellow orangish highlighted cells, are the cells that are reflecting a change from what the current plans have. So you can see there is a lift in the deductibles. The co-insurance changes to 20% across all plans and there is a lift to the max out-of-pocket. This plan, Option A, has an estimated plan savings of about $1 million. We have an Option B. Option B is a slight lower plan savings, so the increases to the deductibles and the max out-of-pockets are slightly lower. The co-insurance remains the same. With both of these plans, we would still be anticipating an increase in the employee premiums. For 2019, it would be a 15% increase to employee premiums across all plans. For 2020, it's a projected 7% increase and for 2021, it's a projected 6% increase. These plans, both Option A and Option B, do not require any additional employer funding at this time. And then you can see between the two options how the actuarial values are assigned. So the High Deductible Health Plan being the silver, OA Select at the gold, and the Point of Service is the platinum. And then again, Option A has a plan savings of about $1 million and Option B is about Alternate 3 would move employees from the Point of Service Plan onto the OA Select. Again, the yellow highlighted cells are what would reflect a change from the existing plan. There would be a slight lift in the deductible for both plans. The co-insurance on the OA Select would move up to 20%. And the maximum out-of-pocket would also be lifted on both plans. This plan would also have small increases, I'm sorry, increases to the employee premiums. This would be across both plans as well. So it would be a 15% increase for 2019, a 7% increase for 2020, and a 6% increase for 2021. This plan would require minimal employer funding for 2019. It's expected to be between $35,000 and $50,000 on top of what the college is already contributing. And then the actuarial values, it's the High Deductible Plan at a high silver or low gold level and the OA Select at a gold level. Next is Alternate 4. This would move all employees onto the High Deductible Health Plan. We would maintain the same deductible and co-insurance on this plan, but there would be a slight lift to the maximum out-of-pocket. This would also ask for an increase in employee premiums for 2019 at 15%, an anticipated 7% for 2020, an estimated 6% for 2021. This plan would require an additional employer contribution of almost $1.5 million. And the actuarial value on this plan would have it at a high gold, I'm sorry, high silver, low gold level plan. The last plan that we're presenting today is Alternate 5. This would also move employees off of the Point of Service Plan and onto the OA Select or High Deductible Health Plan. The benefit with this plan is that with this redesign, we would be able to open both plans to all employees. So we would be able to offer two plans to new hires. Anyone who is currently on the High Deductible Health Plan would have the option of moving to the OA Select if they felt that that was a better fit for them. This plan has an estimated plan savings of $750,000. The yellow cells again are showing you where there are changes to the plans. So there would be increases in the deductibles. The co-insurance would go up to the 20% for the OA Select, slight lifts in the maximum out-of-pocket. And we'd also be introducing a fourth tier to the prescription line for specialty drugs because specialty drugs are driving a lot of our pharmaceutical costs right now. So that carve-out will be helpful in maintaining costs longer down the road. For Alternate 5, we have two options for the employee premiums. For this plan, Option A is in 2019, there is no increase to the employee premiums on the High Deductible Health Plan, but a 20% increase to the premiums of the OA Select. When we talked at the beginning about some of the assumptions that were made, we talked about a 20% shift in employees moving to the High Deductible Health Plan. Part of the way that these premiums are built out is to have that affordable option at the High Deductible Health Plan level for employees to choose from. Option B would be doing an 18% increase in employee premiums on both plans for 2019 only. At this time, with our current projections, if the migration happens the way that we are anticipating it to happen, we would not need to do increases to premiums in 2020 or 2021. Again, that's dependent on a lot of things, but with this build-out of these scenarios, those increases would not be needed at this time. This plan does, also does not need any additional employer funding forecasted at this time. And with the actuarial values, the High Deductible Health Plan would be silver plan and the OA Select would still be a gold level plan. This plan has an estimated plan savings of about $750,000. So to recap, Alternate 1 keeps the existing plans the way they are but would need additional funding from the college. Employee premiums would increase 15% in 2019, 7% in 2020, and 6% in 2021. Alternate 2 would create the three actuarially unique plans. There's two scenarios with which plans we could do, Option A or Option B, both with slight changes but maintaining those unique plan levels. Both of those plans have different plan level savings. Alternate 3 would move employees off of the Point of Service Plan and onto the OA Select. Small plan changes would be in place. This plan would need some additional funding from the college between $35,000 and $50,000. The employee premiums would increase as well. Alternate 4 moves all employees onto the High Deductible Health Plan. This plan would require an additional funding level of almost $1.5 million from the college. The employee premiums would increase as well. And then Plan 5, which is the plan that opens up both plans to all employees. It removes the Point of Service Plan, so those employees, it's about 50 employees on the Point of Service Plan would be moved to the OA Select or the High Deductible Health Plan. There's two options there for how we could do the premium, whether we do it to the OA Select or the High Deductible Health Plan and the OA Select. This plan does not require any additional funding from the college at this time and has the estimated savings of about $750,000. So before we open it up to questions, I wanted to run through the timeline real quick with you all. Right now, we're asking for the vote of approval on one plan. We're asking for that approval now because we have significant changes with whichever plan we move forward with. And it takes time to work through that with our carriers as well as getting all that information to employees. It takes a few months to get the system configuration done as well. So in order to give employees... So in order to give employees two weeks of time to go into the system and select their plans for 2019, we need to be able to move forward with the steps now. And whatever plan design is selected will be effective for 1-1-2019. So with that, I'd like to open it up for questions. Yes, ma'am?
Before you open it up to questions, I wanted to say to the board that, first, I want to thank you for the workshop, because I know you've heard the majority of this information earlier. And number two, with the existing claims that we have right now, we will have to do a 3.5 million dollar cash infusion, no matter what plan we choose at this point. And I just want to make sure that that information was available to you and that you knew that's where we are headed and what we need to do. So I look forward to your advice.
Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
I think I asked you at the retreat, or at the board, whatever it was called.
Workshop.
Yeah, workshop. How many people are on the POS? How many lives is that affecting?
About 50. I think it's 52.
52, okay.
Originally, the Point of Service was the only plan with an out-of-network option, and so it's very appealing to employees, because older plan styles, out-of-network was really important. As carriers have changed how the plan designs are set up, out-of-network is kind of getting phased out, because the carriers' networks are getting so much broader. So it's not, if we move with one of the plans that don't offer out-of-network, we have the ability to work with those employees to make sure that any doctors they're seeing we can help with that bridge, since it's such a small group of employees.
Mr. Chair, I tried to avoid this question for a long, but I just want to ask this really quick. Who else, two things, who else applied for in the bidding process?
For the medical insurance? We had UHC, Aetna, Cigna were our top three carriers that we came in with. We entertained bids from the Florida Consortium, and Humana also gave us a bid, but their out-of-network, their disruption was so high, it wasn't worth bringing them in.
So, my second part of that question is, we chose Aetna, right?
Right. Correct.
Did Aetna save us the most money out of all the bids that came in?
Aetna offered us the most competitive administrative rates. As far as additional services, it was close, but their administrative rates were the lowest out of the bids that we received.
Okay. Can I get, I just want to, I want to, can I get a copy of who bid and their bids? Just, I was just going to review them.
Yeah. We can also send the fully insured proposals that we got as well.
Any other specific questions?
Real quick, 2A, alternative, or alternate 2, Option A, there's no movement between high deductibles and another plan? The ones that are on high deductibles are still stuck there?
Correct. Right.
I like 5.
Yeah. To kick this conversation off, I'll just say that it seems to me that Alternative 5 offers the most of what we're looking for, I think, for our employees, between the ability to migrate, correct? No matter when you were hired, from one plan to the other, still having plan options, the premiums increasing hopefully one time rather than a tiered system over the next few years to give people the most consistency. And I love the specialty drug carve-out as part of that plan. These aren't easy decisions to make at all, but this is the position we're in. So, my opinion is Alternative 5, but I'd love to hear others.
Move we approve Alternate 5?
Second.
Quick question, as I have a first and a second. There is an Option A and an Option B for Alternate 5. The only difference, correct, Michelle, is that A is a 20 percent increase in the OA Select for one year, B has 18 percent increases for both HDHPA and the OA.
Correct.
Okay. So if I could get a clarification?
I had a question about that Option B.
Okay.
Is the intent of the high deductible plan increase to try to move people over to the OA Select, or just was how the actuarial numbers work?
No, originally, we wanted, originally, Option A was the, what we brought forward.
That's what we talked at the workshop, right?
Because of the idea that it would promote movement onto the high deductible health plan, for one, since the high deductible being a consumer-driven plan, you're typically more aware, more responsible of how you're using your insurance.
Right.
B was an option where, how can we get the same savings in the premiums if we were to do something different? Because of how much higher the OA Select premiums are already, in order to get that same savings, we were looking at increases of 18 percent on both plans.
All right, lady.
So the clarification with the motion on the floor is that it is Alternate 5A. Is the second still applicable to that motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I have a first and a second. Any more questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
And one for Mr. Gibbons, a nay. Thank you, Ms. Mantega.
Thank you.
This is, you've done a lot of work on this. I know there are a lot of people that have to give us some reasonable options. And the idea, as you said, is to not have to revisit this every year, but to get ahead of it for the health of the college. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we will move to the consent agenda. What I'd like to do here is take this in one piece. So if there's a motion and a second, we'll then open it up to questions or discussion regarding any of the pieces of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we take the entire consent agenda as written with any questions that board members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbons.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion concerning any piece in particular to the consent agenda? Hearing none?
Move approval?
All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you all. You all saw the informational reports in your packet, and I believe that moves us to, Madam President, anything from your end?
I think that it's important for the board to know that we are zero narrowly focused in on redoing the schedule. We are undoing the schedule as it is. We're looking at how we can not have the budget drive the schedule, but have the schedule bring on a higher budget, more resources to the college. And so we're looking at how quickly we can make some major changes for the spring semester. So we're, instead of looking at the percentage full, we're really looking at the true cost of instruction. And I think Trustee Foster will be happy on finding the sweet spot. How many students do we really need in the class to pay for the cost of the course so that we can provide a more student-friendly schedule and have a stronger accountability in bringing revenues into the institution? So that's going to be my serious focus. That will be what I'm looking at for the next six weeks.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's time today. I know we went a little over. There were many important things to discuss and go over, so I thank you all. Our next meeting is September 18th at the Clearwater Campus.
Were you going to say something?
Okay.
And with that, we will adjourn. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.